And welcome everyone to the Monday, April 21st, 2014 meeting of the Williamson County Board of Education. Before we get started, board members, if you would please register your attendance. We have 11 board members present this evening. I'd also like to ask everyone to please silence or turn off your cell phones before we get started. And I'd like to thank deputies John Burks and James Berlin for being here this evening to provide our security. We appreciate your presence as always. First item on the agenda is the pledge, and if you would please stand and join Board Member Ken Peterson as he leads us in the pledge, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and board members, you have at your place this evening the amended agenda that I sent to you late this afternoon. It reflects the changes to the language on item under consent 1D, which is the Encore Summer Enrichment Program. And it also adds item 3F, which is a board member requested action item referencing the Franklin Special School District open zoning. Are there any other corrections to the agenda before we move forward with the approval? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda? Motion for Mr. McLaughlin. Second for Mr. Gregory. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. As part of that approval, the board approved on the consent, the minutes from the March 24, 2014 board meeting, we approved 4.406P acceptable use media release and Internet safety procedures, the field trip free request, the Encore Summer Enrichment Program, the high school course list for 2014-15, the special high school course list for 2014-15, Power Mondays for 2014-15, the use of facilities fee, Heritage Middle Office reconfiguration, and the Brentwood High School band tower. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We have three individuals who have signed up to address the board this evening. When I call your name, if you would please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Golden, who sits to my right, is the timekeeper. He has some cue cards to keep you on task, and where you hear the timer go off, if you would please conclude your comments and take your seat. First individual is Brian Hammers.
My name is Brian Hammers. I live at 155 Forest Trail, Brentwood, Tennessee. Good evening, board members. As you know, we, the members of Concord Forest, are strongly against your proposed rezoning plan. We have been rezoned approximately five times throughout our neighborhood's history to the detriment of many children, and that breaks down to five elementary rezonings, five middle school rezonings, and four high school rezonings, including this one. Currently, we roughly have 35 children in Williamson County schools. Concord Forest is already built to capacity, containing 75 homes only. Only 20% of our neighborhood has school-aged children. Concord Forest is already built to capacity. No other homes can be built in Concord Forest. I must ask you, how can 35 children so tremendously affect the current overcrowding issue? I contend that it doesn't, and should not be used as an excuse any longer. As an elected official, you are the voice of the people. I'm holding here a petition in my hand that contains the signatures of nearly 100% of our neighborhood, of the registered voters and residents, opposing the rezoning plan. The people of Concord Forest have spoken, and we say vote no to the rezoning of our neighborhood.
Thank you. Next is Jamie Burns.
Hi, my name is Jamie Burns. I live at 2220 Maricopa Court, and I'm here representing the neighborhood of Catalina. I gave Dr. Looney a petition last week with signatures from families in Catalina. I'm asking that you please consider not rezoning Catalina subdivision from Sunset Elementary School and Sunset Middle School to Nellensville Elementary School and Mill Creek Middle. This will be Catalina's fourth elementary rezone in six years. We have 10 families that will have rising fifth graders, which means students will have to attend two new schools in two years. Nellensville Elementary School and Mill Creek Middle are much further in distance than our current school of Sunset. This will cause longer bus routes and earlier pickup and later drop-offs. We are located across from Britton Downs subdivision, which is remaining at Sunset. Our children can walk to Sunset through Britton Downs. I believe it is in the best interest of our children of Catalina to remain at Sunset. We will practically be passing our current school to get to the new schools. Thank you.
Next is Brent Baumgartner.
Good evening, school board. My name is Brent Baumgartner. I live at 430 Woodcrest Lane in Franklin. I'm coming here tonight to express some great concerns regarding security for our schools, and in particular, elementary schools. I'm a parent. I have a couple of kids at Trinity Elementary. I have a wife who works for the board at Crockett Elementary, and I've been very concerned since, and I've been in the security industry for 25 years, over 25 years, and I appreciate the addition of SROs to the system and to the elementary schools. But something that is very lacking and troubles me in particular is the lack of access control in particular and other electronic systems. I applaud the system for the cameras that you have and the video, but the access control buys precious time for our schools and our students and our parents, our students and our administration to seek shelter or have an SRO come to the front of the school or come to the area that they're needed. And quite frankly, I have gone to my schools, either my wives or my sons, several times and not even seen the SRO. So the SRO, while it is a fix, you know, it's not the total picture, and what I'm speaking of really doesn't cost that much, and I wish you would consider other aspects of our security going forward. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment for this evening. The next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. It's good to see everybody this evening. A couple of items before we get on with the really important business of highlighting students and teachers. We are just coming off a long weekend and proud to report that we had a really productive day in school today. Teachers and staff members are continuing to work hard with the young men and women that were charged with serving. We are just two weeks away from the official opening of the assessment season, and so all eyes are on the assessment season beginning and making sure that we're tying up loose ends with our students as we prepare them for the PARC assessment. As you now know, the legislative session, I'm sorry, not PARC, oh, thank you. PARC is on my mind heavily, but it's TCAP. The legislative session has ended. I appreciate everybody's support and encouragement through that process. There were a number of bills that failed to become law this session that this board had taken official positions on, so I think overall it was a productive and positive legislative session for the school board. And then, thank you, Ms. Hammond, for reminding me. I think the big news coming out of the legislative session is the PARC assessment has been delayed by one school year, and we are in actually good shape in Williamson County schools. We have a scope and sequence guide that has been prepared with that in mind, and so I don't think that our students will miss a beat as we enter the next school year preparing for TCAP one more time. That completes my report. Without any additional questions to me, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Birdsong, and Mrs. Birdsong has some fantastic news about some exciting achievements of students and employees.
Board members, Dr. Looney, we have so much to celebrate tonight. We are going to start with the biggest assessment of all, and that's our ACT, and we are celebrating, whoops, five, count them, five students who earned a perfect score on the ACT during this last testing session. We are going to start at Brentwood High School and Christopher Cortez, and then Paul Dirkowitz, also at Brentwood High School, Wakos Fazili, Brentwood High School, Page High's Michael Lee, perfect score on the ACT, and Ravenwood High, Jean Lee, also a perfect score on the ACT. We may be on our way to setting a record for perfect ACT scores in a school year. Now let's talk about the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. This is the group that produces the Emmy Awards at the national level, and they do student awards, and quite frankly, our students in Williamson County cleaned house. They competed against students across the state, North Carolina and Alabama. We will start again at Brentwood High School, and winning the Emmy for music video is actually a tie between this group and a group from Centennial, which we will recognize in just a minute, but this is Andrew Hughes, Connor Holmes, and Apicorn Barafarit, and you are going to hear Apicorn's name again because he won yet another in the category of public service announcement, along with Ben Sherrill and Sammy Edgerton, and he won again for nonfiction and short form in that category, along with Timmy Dairy Berry, Caleb Howard, Andrew Hughes, Ben Sherrill, Noah Asuna, Andy McDonald, J.J. Moulton, Cassie Childster, and Julianne Martin. Brentwood High also won in the category of nonfiction long form, and this is Hannah Thomas, Sierra Phillips, and Hannah Fieldhacker. Their teacher is Ronnie Adcock. Centennial High brought home two Emmy Awards this year, again tied with Brentwood for music video, and this is Josh Katina, Noah Shirley, Caleb Simmons, and Patrick Mills, and then Josh actually won for audio sound as well. Their teacher at Centennial is Don Merrick. Franklin High brought home two Emmys, I'm not supposed to call them Emmys, brought home two student awards, Jake Hilton and Luke Dyer, and I just want you to know that Luke is actually working behind the scenes. He's one of our interns for WCTV, so he's actually working your school board meeting tonight. Not pictured with them is Dalton Smith, and they won for Best Newscast. Also from Franklin, Jake Hilton again won. He actually tied with a student from Summit for Best Editor. Their teacher at Franklin is Patrick Nichols. Two winners from Independence High School, Raquel Kimball and Max Hanson for fiction, short form, and Mac McGuire won for Best Talent, and their teacher is Matt Balzer. Page High won three awards, Zach Bojali and Sam Brancho won for sports broadcasting, and then Sam won two more awards for Best Director and Best Photographer. Their teacher is Terry Flowers. Over at Ravenwood High School, Skylar Raven won for Best Animation Graphics and Special Effects. Her teacher is Laura Faber, and Summit brought home its first student award, Morgan Hamer, who tied with Franklin for Best Editor. The teacher at Summit is Chris Smith. I told you, we brought home a lot of hardware from that competition. Okay, let's talk about science. Science is next. First place in material science at the Tennessee State Science Olympiad, Jean Lee, you already heard about Jean before, and A.J. Way. Their teacher is April Berstada. And let's talk about forensics, National Forensics League, Tennessee State Champion, and this is not the sciency forensics, this is the speech debate forensics, winning in congressional debate, House One, Rebecca Neenan from Brentwood High School. Her coach is Harriet Medlin. And also from Brentwood High School in the National Forensics League, congressional debate senate winner is Suroch McLean. Again, Harriet Medlin, Ms. Medlin, is their coach. Now, also in forensics, in the Tennessee High School Speech and Debate Drama, Speech and Drama League competition, after dinner speaking, Josh Moochie from Ravenwood High School, and this is the second year in a row that Josh has won the state championship in this category, and also from Ravenwood High School, Meredith Mullin won in poetry. Their coach is Kelly Dine. Let's talk about youth in government. Outstanding statesmen in the Red House from Summit High School, Elliot Geary and Billy Baumgart, and also Summit High School Outstanding Red House Bill, Riley Bethman and Caitlin McCauley, and Jess Newman, who you will meet right here, won two state awards. Outstanding statesman in the Red Senate and 2015 Red Senate Clerk. Their teacher is Matt Hook. Mock trial. Franklin High School, Matty Booton, first place mock trial defense witness. Franklin High School, Carson Cook, first place defense attorney. Franklin High School, Jimmy Wester, first place mock trial overall most valuable participant. Their teacher, Ray Sheetz. Fairview High School, let's talk about HOSA. First place Tennessee State HOSA in medical terminology, Fairview High School, and Savannah Hester, Stephanie Keen is her teacher. In HOSA, first place public health from Page High School, Gabby Dees, Katie Easterling, Brooke Hostfield, and Peyton Clark. Their teacher, Donna Gennery. Summit High School, two awards, Kinsley Johnson in job-seeking skills, and your HOSA Vice President for next year, Hayden Hughes. Their teacher, Christina Isong and Denise Asbury. We do have an athletics celebration tonight. Rex Schatz from Ravenwood High School was named an All-American Wrestler by the National High School Coaches Association. His coach is Josh Peck. Now it's time to honor some of our staff members. We are going to start with Christina Isong from Summit High School, who was named the Tennessee State HOSA Advisor of the Year. Over at Franklin High School, David Adlott, the John Philip Sousa Foundation Laureate of the Band World Legion of Honor. That is quite a mouthful and quite an honor. And Betty Lordeman from Brentwood High School was named the Tennessee High School Speech and Drama League State Educator of the Year, Cridger Award recipient, and Hillsborough School, Cameron Gish, was selected as a Director's Track Assistant for the 2014 Music for All Summer Symposium. Congratulations to all of our students and staff members.
Thank you, Dr. Looney and Ms. Birdsong. Next item on the agenda is a board chairman's report. I would like to send our congratulations to Franklin High School teacher Tracy Harmon, who was the Mid Cumberland High School Teacher of the Year, and to Brentwood High Boys Basketball Senior Forward, Andy Schubert, who was awarded the Trophy House Player of the Year for the second year in a row, and Brentwood High School TV and Film Students, who placed in the top 20 in the first White House Film Festival, and they were competing from students across the nation. And this evening, we have a young man who's here working on his community and service merit badge, Mark Hancock from Treat 418. Would you like to stand and let us welcome you? And we wish you the very best on that. I'd also like to thank the Franklin High School HOSA Group and their teacher sponsor, Gary Tanksley, the Monroe Carroll Junior Children's Hospital at Vanderbilt, the Williamson Medical Center, the Franklin Police Department, Lifelight, the Ford Motor Credit Company Fund and Community Services, and the Allstate Foundation for their collaboration and sponsorship of the mock crash that was recently held on the Franklin High School football field. I was able to attend that day, and the students felt it was a very powerful demonstration on the dangers of distracted driving and the unintended consequences, and these students have been promoting a year-long campaign to be in the zone and turn off your phone, and I think they did a very good job of putting that together. I think perhaps they have saved some lives by doing that. Also, Fairview High School recently hosted a Special Olympics, and it was a great day for everybody, and the students out there did a phenomenal job with that task. Williamson County students' ACE mentors were recently involved in a design project where they designed emergency housing barn for the county's Animal Control Center in Franklin, and this new barn is complete with a rainwater capture system. So we might want to see if we can employ some of these young men and women in this endeavor, and it was Brentwood High School students Logan Costner, Elliot McClure, and Christopher Corley, Fairview High School student Nicholas Hoffman, Franklin High School student Matthew Yeomans, Eric Dunsey, Jacob Hunter, Matthew Rutledge, Reed Solomon, and Dylan Tan, Page High School student Lillian Powell, and Independence High School students Jonathan Cole, Max Wilson, and Claudia Santiago. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome back Independence High School wrestler, Hunter Garston, who recently returned home from his long journey of recovery, and we're going to wish him the very best that he remains hunter strong. We have some principals and staff that are here in the audience this evening. If you would stand and let us welcome you in. Thank you very much for being here. We always appreciate your presence and support. The next item on the agenda is new business. We had board policy revisions for first reading. Item 31 is 2.803 salary deductions. This is on page 129. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. This is the first reading of this policy, 2.803. I do recommend the changes which are highlighted in blue text on page 129.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Hullett. Second for Ms. Mills. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Motion passes. Next item is 3A2, 3.2101, public ceremonies. This is a deletion. It's on page 131. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. I do recommend approval of the deletion of this policy.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Vogt. Second for Mr. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Motion passes. Next item is 3A3, 4.600, report cards and grading systems. This is on page 133. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. This policy would not go into effect until the fall of 2014. This is the first reading. I do recommend approval upon the first reading.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Mills. Second for Ms. Hammond. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Motion passes. Next item is 3A4, 6.502, enrollment of foreign students. It's on page 137. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Do recommend approval of this proposed policy change. This is first reading, and I recommend your approval.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Peterson. Second for Mr. Hullett. Is there any discussion? Motion passes. Next item is 3B. This one, these are 2013-14 budget resolutions. The first one is the Central Cafeteria Fund. Information is on page 141. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. As you are aware, this is a self-sustaining fund. Do recommend approval of this resolution for $125,000.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Wimberly. Second for Mr. Welch. Is there any discussion? Motion passes. Next item is 3B2. This is the Extended School Program Fund on page 143. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. This too is a self-sustaining fund, the Extended School Program Fund Budget. I do recommend approval of these changes for $264,798.
Motion for Ms. Mills. Second for Ms. Vogt. Is there any discussion? Motion passes. Next item is 3C1. This is 2013-14 general purpose school fund resolutions to the county commission. The first one is for insurance. It's on page 145. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had some unforeseen expenditures as relates to insurance claims. Recommend approval of a $100,000 transfer.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Hammond. Second for Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Motion passes. Next item is 3C2. This is additional special education expense. This information is on page 147. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Recommend approval of submitted.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Wimberly. Second for Ms. Mills. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Motion passes. Next item is 3C3. This is for gasoline on page 149. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. As the temperature goes up, so seems the gas price. Do recommend approval of a transfer to pay for additional fuel expenses.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Hullett. Motion for Mr. Hullett. Second for Mr. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3C4. This is the trustee commission. Information is on page 151. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. We really don't have a choice about this. We have to pay the trustees' commission. This represents some of the money that we paid to the trustee. Recommend your approval.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Hammond. Second for Mr. Wimberly. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3D. This is the use of one remaining stockpile day for professional development. The information is on page 153. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. You've had quite a bit of discussion about this topic. I have received written permission from the Commissioner of Education to shorten the student school year by one day, making May the 21st a half-day for students. Employees would continue to work their normal schedule. We have submitted a plan for professional development or training for our employees for that day. I do recommend your approval of this alteration in the school calendar for the 13-14 school year.
Someone like to make a motion? For Mr. Peterson? Second for Ms. Vogt? Is there any discussion? Mr. Gregory?
Dr. Looney, originally you had requested two days for this, for professional development. Would you prefer to have those two days?
From the superintendency, my preference would have been two days. However, given the feedback that I've received from the folks in the trenches, it would have created a hardship as it relates to end-of-year exams for the high school students specifically, and therefore I've altered my recommendation for one. So from an operational standpoint, two days would have been better. From a student learning standpoint, one day was a better fit.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Vogt?
Dr. Looney, as far as what our teachers will be doing during that time, could you fill us in a little bit more? And why is it important to do it at this time rather than some other point in the summer?
One of the commitments that I've had in place for the four years that I've been here is I've made a promise to the teachers, no summer surprises, so that when they walk away from the school year, they leave for the summer knowing of all the changes that they're going to have to deal with when they come back. So that one day of training at the end of the year allows us to prepare them for those changes. We have several very significant change initiatives slated for the 14-15 school year. Some of those changes are, were not created at the local level, but created by higher authority. More specifically, we are going to be implementing a brand-new student information system across the entire district called Skyward. So we're going to have to train teachers on that. We also, every year, we revise and upgrade and update the scope and sequence guides that have helped us be successful in the last four years. Those revisions will be ready, and we'll be spending much of the day talking about the revisions to the scope and sequence guides. And then finally, our school district is leading in many, many ways. One of those ways being response to intervention, RTI, and you've heard a lot of discussion about that. And so we're going to be training our teachers on strategies, on how to respond to intervention for students that we work with over the summer months. So it's almost just-in-time professional development for the teachers that are going to be working with our struggling students over the summer months. So I think it's going to be time very, very well spent.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3E. This is the zoning recommendations for Nolansville High, Mill Creek Middle, and Mill Creek Elementary Schools. This information is on page 155, 3170. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. Before I make my recommendation, I would like to thank you for your diligence and the questions that I've received from you even as late as today. And so I really do appreciate that. I worked over the weekend to go back through the numbers and through the plans, and I remain convinced that the proposal that we submitted to you is an appropriate proposal that meets the parameters that the board established as it relates to this rezoning. As I've said, there is no perfect rezoning plan. This does call for some families to move from a place where they're very comfortable. I'm extremely confident that as we work towards opening the new schools, that the new schools that we open, Nolansville High School, Mill Creek Middle, and Mill Creek Elementary School, will be seller schools just like the remaining schools that we have in the district. And for that reason, I do recommend that you approve the plan that was submitted to you with the change, and this is very important, with the change that Britton Downs be zoned for Sunset Elementary, Sunset Middle, and Nolansville High School. And we had a four-hour work session the other night, so you understand why I'm making that change. I'd be glad to answer any additional questions that you have before you make a decision.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Hammond? Second for Mr. Mesra? And before we move forward with any discussion, I want to tell those of you who are attendants this evening as members of that community that Mr. Anderson is not here this evening and regrets that he was not able to be here for this meeting. He was called into an emergency meeting at his employment late this afternoon and was not able to be here for this. So I do want to let you know that he has heard your concerns and has read your emails and that he regrets that he was not able to be here for this meeting this evening. Any discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
Dr. Looney, I don't know if you or your staff are ready to answer this, but just from the people on the public hearing, Concord Forest and Catalina, they talked about being rezoned a number of times. I don't know if the staff has that information available. If we could, it would be nice to be able to discuss that.
Yes, sir. I have a staff member, Allison Nunley, is prepared to give you some additional information. Allison?
Thank you.
Sunset Elementary School opened in 2005. Concord Forest and the Waller Road area was moved to Sunset Elementary at that time from Nolansville Elementary. In 2008, that's approximately when Britton Downs started construction and attended Sunset Elementary. The north side of Britton Lane and Catalina remained at Nolansville. When the district-wide rezoning became effective in 2011, that's when the boundary line moved to Nolansville Road and Catalina was moved to Sunset Elementary. At the middle school level, I had Concord Forest at Woodland Middle School, and they were rezoned to Sunset Middle when it opened in 2005. And I don't have any further rezonings for them at that time.
Thank you.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes, I think we all take this rezoning duty very seriously, and with your indulgence, I just wanted to, I wrote out some things, so I say it correctly, what I really mean to say. I just wanted to say that rezoning is one of the most difficult duties of the school board and our superintendent. The individual concerns that many have expressed are very compelling, and I truly empathize. I think change is really hard, especially when we don't initiate it on our own behalf. But we, as a body, have to manage this, the delivery of quality educational experiences to Williamson County students wherever they live, and this has got to be our first priority. Overcrowding does compromise learning opportunities. I truly believe this. And it's why we build the new schools, and it's why we're rezoning existing schools. In our dynamic and growing county, we're hoping, and I mean this honestly, we are hoping to limit our rezoning to a three-to-five-year window. In order to not overcrowd our conditions and to avoid the annual rezoning that we could potentially have if we accommodated all the individual concerns, we as a body have to look at this bigger picture for the benefit of the system as a whole. The good news is we have fantastic schools, and we serve all of our Williamson County students very, very well. So I think we take this very seriously as a body, and I think Dr. Looney and his staff have worked diligently. They've had answers to all of the questions that we've come up with. So I feel confident going forward in this, but I do empathize with the people that it will affect. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3F. This is the board member requested action referencing FFSD open zoning. The information is on the page that was placed at your seat this evening. It is the new page 171. Dr. Looney?
This action item is on the agenda at the request of a board member, and we've had some really robust discussion about it. This is not something that I feel comfortable with recommending, so this is moving forward without the superintendent's recommendation. I believe it has significant implications on the budget, school capacity, and services.
Someone like to make a motion? Mr. McLaughlin?
I need to know specifically what your motion is. Do you want me to do it without the mic?
The mic's on.
Mic's on?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the motion that I would like to make is a motion to open-zone FSD students in split feeder subdivisions. That's split feeder subdivisions between students that have FSD students and WCS students in the same subdivision. Also, I would like to add to that not exceeding the number of students already approved in 2014 at any school. Therefore, we're not overcrowding any school that we haven't already approved. And giving priority to any WCS student who applies for open zoning in our schools, giving them a priority over any FSD students.
Could you repeat that, please?
So without the prefaces? A motion to open-zone FSD students in split feeder subdivisions. Not exceeding the number of students already approved in 2014 for any school. And giving priority to any WCS student who applies for open zoning in our schools.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McLaughlin, just let me ask a clarifying question. Are you referring to the board vote last month for the open-zone schools?
Yes. The numbers at those schools are what we approved last month.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to open-zone FFSD students in split feeder subdivisions, not exceeding the number of students already approved, and giving priority to the Williamson County school students who applied to Williamson County schools' open-zone schools.
Right.
We have a motion on the floor. We do not have a second. We have a motion from Mr. McLaughlin. And a second from Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Gregory?
A couple of things, Tim. I think we need to identify the subdivisions by name that would be taken into this motion. So I guess I'll have to put an amendment forward for that. And I also think we were discussing this to take effect in fall of 2015 if it was to pass, and not this immediate fall to give staff time to prepare for it. Is that your recollection of that? Okay. So?
Excuse me, just a moment. As a point of clarity, the schools that we approved to be open-zoned are only for the 2014-15 school year. But Mr. Gregory is saying that this would not become effective until 2015.
So we need to tie it to the 2015 open-zone numbers.
The list of open-zone schools that we approved at the last board meeting is for 2014-15. Mr. Gregory has indicated that his concern is to be effective for 2015-16, which potentially could be a different list of schools.
Okay, I can live with that if Allison can and staff. But I would like to identify the subdivisions by name so that there's no questions if a subdivision is split very slightly that someone could say this is a split subdivision.
And I will say, Mr. McLaughlin mentioned seven subdivisions, so that doesn't necessarily need an amendment. It just needs a description of the seven he referred to.
That'd be fine.
Do you want those seven identified for the record?
Yes, please.
Mr. McLaughlin, I'm sorry, I did not have your mic turned on when you did that. Would you repeat that, please?
If I may, I'm going to step in real quickly.
Go ahead.
Nichols Bend does not currently have any homes built. That's a neighborhood that we're projecting. There's proposed development there.
Okay.
And so when you mentioned seven, I don't think that was one of the seven you intended. Also, Brentwood Point 1 and 2 are in Williamson County schools. Brentwood Point 3 is actually exclusively in FSD if you look at the numbers. So when you mentioned seven, the seven that were discussed at the previous work session did not include those three neighborhoods.
Since I wasn't there, would you read those off, please?
Okay, as I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Caldwell Estates, Falcon Creek, Founder's Point, Jackson Lake, Haddon Hall, McKay's Mill, Pope Place. How many is that?
Six.
Seven? Six? That's seven.
If you would make that part of my emotion, then I, thank you.
I don't think you mentioned Brentwood Point 3.
All right, if Brentwood Point 3 is one of your seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Brentwood Point 3, Caldwell Estates, Falcon Creek, Founder's Point, Jackson Lake, and Haddon Hall, and Pope Place.
Thank you.
Is that good?
That's great.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Hullett?
Thank you. I have a question and also a comment. The question's for Dr. Looney. Have you had any conversations with Dr. Snowden, Superintendent of FSSD regarding this? And if so, his opinion on it?
Yes, sir. After the work session, I called Dr. Snowden, informed him of the conversation that we had had on this topic. I didn't, I didn't ask him his opinion. I would describe his reaction as less than pleased.
And then just the comment that I would have is that, to my understanding, FSSD has roughly about 3,500 students. And if 20 kids, 50 kids, 100 kids decided to come to our schools, Mr. Peterson and I have wives who are teachers in our county, and think if those kids came and they didn't have kids to fill classrooms and a teacher lost their job. What if your wife lost her job? What if my wife, my wife lost her job because those kids came here? I think if this, if this is pursued by this entity, it would be highly irresponsible to go beyond our sworn duty and our jurisdiction to go into another boundary to allow kids to come. So I cannot support this measure.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Mills?
I think I was pretty clear about how I felt about this at the work session as well. I can't see that this is to our benefit in any way. I think it is, is to the detriment of the Franklin Special School District for us to take their students. I think that we can't plan accordingly regardless of setting limited numbers for the students. I think you are picking and choosing which students, if you're wanting to open zone Franklin Special and you're saying you only want these six or seven neighborhoods, and there are other kids in those neighborhoods, there are kids that live outside those neighborhoods. So I think it's irresponsible of us to say that we're gonna do and try to fix a split feeder system for Franklin Special when we can't even fix a split feeder for our own system. And so I have a whole laundry list of reasons why I can't support this. That is a few of them. I'm not gonna take up the time to share with them, the rest of you. I think we're outside of our purview in doing this and doing what's in the best interest of our school system, so I can't support this.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
As most of you know, the reason why I'm, you know, with Tim, and I believe that this is something that, my whole point towards all of this was that I just felt like the individual, the children and the parents who asked, asked us to basically make a decision have basically been left dangling for the last two years. I recently heard a, and this is, you know, this is not meant to be any kind of disrespect or anything, but I recently heard a motivational speaker and he spoke about the idea of what a zero and a hero is. And he said a zero is ultimately some, somebody who takes action. And all I've continued to hear over the last two years is that we took action by not taking action. And a hero is someone who takes responsibility. And I just want us as a board to take responsibility and to tell the parents and the children of these split feeder subdivisions that, yes, we want you to come to our, you know, we open, you're a Williamson County student. And to say that they're not is ultimately, they're going to be Williamson County students as long as they continue to live within Franklin. They're gonna move into the high schools. So the bottom line is I just feel like a vote is needed so that way either A, we put it to rest, so that way we can move on and, and they can find other alternatives as to how they want this to happen. But I think we as school board members are put here to basically make decisions and to just put it off and to continue to basically push it down the line, there's a reason why it keeps coming back, and that's because a decision hasn't been made. Franklin Special School District took it upon themselves earlier to make a decision about this, and I understand that they recanted simply for the fact that they realized that, you know, it wasn't this, but at the same time, I think a vote is in the, is in the correct thing that we should do. And to Bobby's point, you know, if they're coming to our schools, we need additional teachers, so we'll be happy to have them. So, just so you know.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Thank you. I just wanted to get a kind of clarification on the motion. So we're looking at this affecting the 2014-2015 school year or the 2015-16 school year that's taking place?
The motion is for next school year, 2014-15.
Okay, thank you. And then what is the potential population of impacted students based upon this? I see we have the number, Sharon, I appreciate you putting this together, but I wasn't sure elementary and middle if this was FSSD or the total or what have you. So if you could calculate for me, just what is the total number of students impacted? Because I hear what you're saying about taking action, but taking action without a plan is just foolhardiness, it's not being a hero.
The numbers on the chart that were prepared for you, we do not have the numbers for Franklin Special School District. So what we did is we provided you a house count based on rooftops between the two districts. So as an example, you can see on, in Caldwell Estates, there are a total of 46 house tops that could be impacted, whether they have three kids in it or one child, I really can't answer that. So that's what we did. Now, I was not aware of the motion that Mr. McLaughlin was gonna make as it relates to taking into consideration the open zoning that the board has already approved. And essentially, in all cases, but I believe one, we had limited, limited it to 25 students. So it could potentially be 25 students for each of these subdivisions.
Okay.
If no Williamson County family chose to request open zoning and receive the priority that Mr. McLaughlin was speaking of.
Okay, so potential of 175 students then is what we have on the high end of that one, moving from to the other. In your opinion, would 175 students moved over, would that force rezoning of other, of
Well, it could not force rezoning for the upcoming year because that's not congruent with what you've established as a value. What it could potentially do and will do, I suspect, if you approve this, is would create, it would create a necessary budget amendment moving forward so that we would hire additional teachers.
Okay.
And potentially support services to go along with that.
I guess this would not be a one-time impact either. We're talking kind of a rippling effect of year to year. Or do we read this motion as kind of a one-time fix?
The way I understood Mr. McLaughlin's motion is for the upcoming year.
And the upcoming year only?
This upcoming year.
Ms. Holman, I wonder if you could tell me, what is our BEP gap between federal state funding?
$5,300 per student, yes.
$5,300 per student? That's the amount we need to make up in local dollars?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So at 175 students times 5,300, I'm getting about $930,000 that we would need to find in the budget or go back to the county commission for. Or am I doing my math wrong there?
Your explanation makes sense to me, whether it was that exact dollar amount, I couldn't tell you without further analysis.
Certainly, I understand, as long as I didn't calculate wrong on it that way. Certainly, okay. And then I think logistically, I know you're not an expert in FSSD budgeting or so forth, but in your role, I'm gonna ask for projecting. It seems to be not much of a leap of faith to think that if FSSD lost 175 students, lost the federal and state funding that went along with that, which exceeds our federal and state funding because of the different demographics of that school system, there would be additional funding required on their part that they would need to make up the difference. The, the point being that obviously there's variable costs that are moving around, but there's fixed costs. They're not gonna change the number of buildings or principals or librarians or, or other support services in place.
Complex answer, it's, there's a lot of moving parts. Franklin Special spends about $12,900 per pupil.
Okay.
Williamson County spends right at $8,000 per pupil.
Okay.
So if, if Franklin Special lost those families to us, they would still collect the property taxes related to the special school district tax for them, but they would lose their share of the BEP dollars.
Right. My logic here, my thinking here, I'm wondering is, are we in essence creating a tax increase for the FSSD parents?
Their per pupil expenditure would go up in Franklin Special because they would be serving less, fewer students with the same local tax revenue.
Gotcha.
So the answer is yes, sir.
And that would be whether or not you have parents in the school system or not by voting this. Those parents like myself that live within the FSSD, both the FSD and WCS zone are going to see a, there's the potential of seeing a tax increase for this. I know you can't answer that, I'm thinking aloud on that one.
I can't speak about Franklin Special, but what I can say is this, is we submitted our budget to the county commission, they haven't approved it yet. That budget did not contemplate the possibility of these additional students, and therefore we would have to make some adjustments to our budget request. And Madam Chair, if I could just add to that, and I appreciate Mr. McLaughlin's motion, and I know that y'all are in a difficult decision-making position, I would, I would add to the conversation though, for you to consider this. If you, if you open zone based on the open zoning parameters that you've already established, and then you add Franklin Special School District students to that, you may unintentionally exacerbate the perception or the feeling that those families have. As an example, if, if you open zone a school for 25 students and 20 of those students happen to be Williamson County and the other five come from Franklin Special, then you've just isolated the remaining students in Franklin Special even further because now some of their peers are gone. Now, I don't know where that tipping point is, but part of the debate has been that we, we don't wanna be isolated from the rest of our neighborhood, but it appears to me that if you do this, that the potential is to further isolate the families that remain.
I guess additionally, on our current open zoning guidelines, we would not be providing transportation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The board does not provide transportation for open zones.
Yes, nor would we allow students within that same neighborhood to go to in a different bus stop and get transportation there either, would we? In the sense of?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're only limiting from a practical matter, certainly not through a official matter, from a practical matter, only families that had the ability to, to transport or find transportation for their students to and from the school every single school day would be eligible for this. So I would argue there's almost a bias against families where you've, you've got two earners working there as well. There's a lot of moving parts in this one, and, and Tim, I wish you could've been at the work session, talk about it further, because this is even a little bit different than, than what we had talked about. And even with that, there was still a lot of unanswered questions, and now we have more. And while I appreciate that you're trying to provide a benefit to those families, I'm even more convinced that what we're actually gonna be providing is a degradation to both the services we can provide without additional funding, without a lot of other questions answered, and most definitely a degradation to the FSSD school district. Which, there's a lot of those parents in my district, which, me being one of those parents in fact. So for those reasons, I can't support this. I would support a massaging of the lines and figuring out kind of a, a permanent fix, looking at it, where does it make sense and fixing the lines and everything else. But simply saying, well, that's too difficult a decision, so what we're gonna do is just throw open the doors, come who may or not. While the intentions are noble, I think the end results are, are negative for both school districts. And so for that reason, I can't support this motion.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin, had you pressed your button to speak? Okay, because I believe, when I turned your mic on for you to respond to Mr. Welch, I took you out of the queue, so I believe you were the next individual that was on the list, so recognizing you now.
Okay, thank you. First of all, just to let you know on the motion, is first of all, we've already approved all of these schools to be a maximum of 25 students. We don't know how many are gonna be Williamson County students. I understand Dr. Looney's motion is if, if 24 of them is from Williamson County, that only leaves one spot. Same way with transportation. All of our open zoning is transportation, so this is no different than any, any other student that wishes to be rezoned. So they're the same. I think that we do need to take care of our Williamson County students, but we have a group of students out there in Williamson County that the parents pay property taxes and state ta, you know, property taxes and state taxes like everyone else. They're basically Williamson County students. They are zoned into FSSD, but they do pay those taxes and, and in my opinion, have the right to go to the Williamson County schools. Some of the examples, so people can understand where I'm coming from, you know, in Founder's Point, there is one little girl that everybody gets on the bus on one street except one little girl. And one little girl stands out there after the bus has left for FSSD and stands out there by herself away from her friends until the bus comes around to pick her up, to go to a different school system. And that's, that's the FSD school. I think I said that backwards, but the others all go to Williamson County schools except this one little girl. Caldwell Estates is another example. There is 2 and 1/2 lots on one street that, so two homes on one street, everybody in the neighborhood goes to Williamson County schools except two homes. And those kids on those two homes have to wait on the next bus to go to an entirely different school system. It's just not right. It's a split, it's a splitter feeder system, and, and I agree with Mr. Welch. I have no problem with massaging the lines. We tried to do that this last year and just couldn't get the support to do that. And so I have no problem with changing lines. The, the county representatives were in favor of that, but it didn't, it didn't pass, it didn't gain momentum with our school board, so this is the other option. And this is no thing, you know, I'm not beating up on FSSD, I just think we have some problems out there for our Williamson County students that need to be corrected. And I think this is the option that is left available to be able to do that. And so, you know, I think we just need to take care of our students. And I think it's wrong for, when the boundaries were set way back when, and all the rural land that was available out there, this probably made all the sense in the world, but it's not true anymore. It's, it's gone past that, and now, you know, I'm not trying to hurt FSSD in any way. I've talked to Dr. Stodden just last week about it. But I think the thing about it is we need to correct it, the, even if we get 100 students, which would be more accurate than 175 students- which would be more accurate than 175 students, because we know from past open zonings, that we have students that are going to go for open zoning. You know, we're going to be able to handle that within our school system, so I appreciate very much being able to speak on the subject.
Thank you. Ms. Mills?
I have a question first, of Mr. Golden, and then I have a couple of comments. We voted on the open zoning a month ago, and at the bottom of the form, it said that Dr. Looney's recommendation was that no schools would be open zoned to Franklin Special students. So procedurally, how can we go back this month, and re-vote and change that? Because what we're doing is changing something that we voted on last month, and all of us voted on it.
Yeah, from a Roberts Rules of Order perspective, this is, in essence, a motion for reconsideration, at least partially. So it does, a motion for reconsideration requires somebody who approved the first motion, who voted in favor of the motion that passed, to request that that be reconsidered.
I think we need to think about that as a Board, in when we vote, and if we don't want to get in the habit of going back and reconsidering our votes from the previous meetings. I don't think that sends a good message to the community, I don't think it speaks for the integrity of the Board. But the thing that I have to say, in regard to what Mr. McLaughlin said, while those students may live in Williamson County, those parents got to choose where they lived. And as you stated, the boundaries were set way back. So it's not like it's a surprise to them, that they know, when they purchase their house within the Franklin Special School District line, that that's where they're going to be zoned to go to school. And so, with the growth that we have in our county, and we did something pretty generous and liberal this year, in open zoning a number of our schools to Williamson County students, in order to try to balance, to keep our numbers as balanced as we could, and give opportunity and choice, I have a huge problem with the fact that we could potentially overload our schools, and not leave the room for growth, that we know we're going to need in the next several years, for our own community, and for the students that we, on this Board, are supposed to be making the best interest decisions for. So, while I understand that they pay taxes in Williamson County, they chose to live in Franklin Special School District. We didn't do that for them, they chose that.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Thanks. I think the last time we reconsidered a vote, I think Janice will recall, was when we put ourselves in a position to hire Dr. Looney. And I think Mr. McLaughlin was a key, a part of that reconsideration. This is not a school board member-driven initiative. The reason I am supporting this is because people in my district have presented their case to me, as well as both of my county commissioners, have asked me to pursue this. I'm curious as to, you refer to your budget request to the county commission. You already have the numbers we're talking about in there. You've got to be prepared to take those numbers that are open zoned, and what we passed last month. You have to be. And so if we limit it to those numbers, how does it bust our budget?
Well, thank you for your question. What we do in Williamson County is we right-size our schools based on enrollment numbers. So, we have budgeted based on a total student population of the current year's students, plus 1,149. Now, where the teachers end up at every specific school, depends on the enrollment at every school. So if you add an additional 175 students to the growth numbers that we've already calculated, and if you do the math, you divide 20 students, or one teacher for every 20 students, then that's, 175 divided by 20, that's how many additional teachers that we have above and beyond what we had. As an example, if we were to, and Summit Independence is a good example of this, if we lose the families that we suspect we will lose, from Summit to Independence, then the teacher associated with those students will leave Summit and go to Independence, and there will not be a net gain of needed teacher units.
But still, you have to be, you're prepared to take those numbers. But you're saying that this would add above and beyond, and have a ripple effect through the district, or...
Well, we're adding 175, potentially, I don't know what the number is, just say 100. If we added 100 students beyond what we're already planning for, then, on average, that means 4-point-some number of teachers that we haven't planned for. And those are not in the budget, which means we would have to request additional teaching units. Where the difference is, that when we do open zoning from a Williamson County school to another Williamson County schools, we're moving students and the associated teachers.
Okay.
Just a few quick points, thank you. In response to Mr. McLaughlin, and also Mr. Gregory, and then to elaborate on Ms. Mills' point as well, we have to remember, we have a sworn duty. We all sit up here, raise the hand, and we have a sworn duty to the students of Williamson County schools. Now, anybody could ask me anything, it doesn't matter if it's a county commissioner, if it's anybody, can ask me to do anything, and if it is not part, for this Board and for students, if it is not part of my sworn duty in this seat that I'm in, ethically, I can't do it. I don't care who asks, I can't do it because it goes against what I swore to upheld, to uphold, when I joined this Board. Now, you know, Janice is right, they moved in where they moved in, and by definition, they're in FSSD. We can't move them out, we can't help them with that, that's where they chose to be. If I'm looking at the numbers correctly, the WCS lots, because we only have the WCS information, the WCS lots, it says, are 2,794. You look across at the numbers, and you've got elementary and middle, because when we're talking about FSSD students, that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about high school, we're talking about that. That is, that combined number is 1,027 students for Williamson County schools. That's over a third of what's underneath those housetops. Now, if you take that number, because what we've been talking about, these are all tight-knit communities. That's why we're in this discussion, because it's neighborhoods, it's my kids and their kids, and your kids and their, and our kids, we're talking about that. So I think you can actually apply that and go across. So, when Mr. Welch asked earlier, and the number we came up with was potentially 175, if you take a third of the FSSD housetops, that's 282 kids, that's almost 300 students we could potentially add to our system. And the other part of that, if you look at the other side of the equation, is if we say, "Well, we have to go by the open zoning, and all the Williamson County kids can go in first," that takes all the teeth out of anything this does. It's a moot point, whether they're, and my point to all of that is, this is the snowflake that starts the avalanche. Because then, the next thing that happens is, "Well, you said you could rezone us, and now you're not letting us in," and then somebody else jumps down, and then everybody's rowing together, and then we're in the briar patch. We really need to be careful, ethically and responsibly, as managers of this entity, with what we're doing. And I think it's a huge mistake to be just shooting from the hip and considering this just on the fly.
Thank you. Ms. Hammond?
Thank you. I was just actually looking at the numbers, too. I had a question on numbers, and actually, Mr. Hallett answered a lot of those, from even looking at the potential of the numbers. I think it is potentially much more than 175 or 100, and I know we're throwing out numbers here and there, but actually, Ms. Hallett did a good job of at least pointing out some of those changes.
Mr. Peterson?
Really, I just want to, you know, just want to go back to the idea that, you know what? For as long as I've been on this Board, for the, you know, almost two years now, this has been an issue. And, you know, the continued idea that it, you know, that just because it was, it has to be that way, like, it just doesn't make sense to me. Now, the bottom line is that, we had a discussion as a Board, and I know, because I was there, and I hope most of the rest of you were, we had a discussion, and we said specifically, that if FSSD made a decision about zoning, and the state legislature was willing to redraw the lines, that we would have that discussion, and that we would make a decision based on that discussion. Now, we had those state legislators sitting across the table from us, before they left, they specifically asked this Board, "Do you want us to redraw the lines?" That conversation was had, this Board decided that, we weren't willing to do that, we didn't want to do that, but we would discuss it during open zoning. We moved it to March during open zoning. Dr. Looney said, "I don't want to necessarily have this discussion, until we figure out the zoning parameters, we will discuss it at open zoning." When it came to open zoning, all of a sudden, everybody forgot that we had that conversation. And then, all right, and to Janice's point with regards to the, you know, the open zoning that we did, you know, it bothers me, truthfully, that we had the discussion, that we were going to revisit it in April, and that Dr. Looney put that on the back of it. So you're right, I should have cut that last month, and I should have asked for that to be removed, and I realized it, once I went home, but at the same time, the discussion was had that we would revisit it. And we've talked about it, and we talked about it at the work session, and we've talked about it today, and really, all, I think all of us want to do is say yes or no, and then we can move on. And ultimately, that's why we're here, and that's what we discussed about the work session. All the dialogue is great, I just want someone, I just want a yes or no, and I think that's what the parents and the children want, a yes or no. And then you know what? If the parents decide at one point, to, you know, decide that they don't want, you know, to continue, or they want to find different means to basically move into, you know, Williamson County or however, then it's their preview, then it's up to them to continue. But at least, both FSSD and the Williamson County School Board has made a decision on this, plain and simple. So I would like to call this to a vote, as soon as the other ones have the opportunity to vote.
Thank you. Ms. Voe?
Thank you. As someone who moved in 2001 to a Franklin Special School District subdivision, I have to share with you anecdotally, that I did so as we were signing our life away on the mortgage papers. The people there repeat over and over to you, that you are in fact moving to a Franklin Special School District home, and you understand going in. I was happy to move into Franklin Special School District, I was well-served, our family was well-served by the school district. That being said, I think, Mr. McLaughlin, your intent behind doing this is good, I think you want to help people in your district. I just have to agree with Mr. Welch, that there are so many moving parts to this, and I'm not certain of the unintended consequences to come down the pike. So I can't get comfortable with it, and I look at Nichols Bend subdivision, which has, no houses exist, and 98 of those lots would go to Franklin Special School District. I don't know how this precedent setting would fall out down the road, and although these additional slots would, how that could be managed by the central office, as far as, it sounds like it's a solution, but it really isn't, too. To your point, Mr. Hallett, it really isn't going to fix the problem of whole subdivisions, say, like Haddon Hall. That's 88 homes there. So, I think we're going to continue to have this problem going forward, and as more development happens, there's going to potentially be other, like this Nichols Bend, other subdivisions that haven't even been started yet, that we're going to have the same issue. So for that reason, I cannot support this. And thank you, Mr. Peterson, I think your wish is going to be granted tonight.
Mr. Mesra?
Yes, thank you. I think Mr. Wimberly and I are the only ones that haven't spoken on this yet, probably next, aren't we? I just wanted to have a couple of questions of clarification. I guess the first one is, it is my understanding, but I don't know that for a fact, that FSSD currently open zones all Williamson County school students. Is that correct? Is anyone aware of that information?
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct.
So, just following the logic there, if they currently open zone any Williamson County school students, then it is not unreasonable for us to reciprocate that favor to their Next question is, it has to do with the money that the county currently, does Williamson County currently provide money to FSSD students?
Yeah. We share our tax rate with them.
Does the money that we, that Williamson County currently send to FSSD follow the student? Just like BEP?
Yes.
So it's not exactly correct that it would be $5,000?
That is the gap between.
Well, currently, the county currently provides that money to FSSD?
Mm.
No, okay.
No, not that. No, they get a share of our property tax, not necessarily the $5,000. They share our property tax.
That was my question, the share of the property tax, does it follow the student?
It's a percentage, it's not necessarily a set dollar amount per student. It's a percentage, it's not a set, like, $5,000 goes with the student, it's a percentage. We split property tax based on a percentage, so that percentage can be, they take it out six decimal places, so it could be a minor amount of money.
Okay, all right, that was my question, whether that money follows the student, but it's, it would be...
Not like the state would.
Not like the, not like BEP.
Not like the state would.
Okay, thank you. The next question, I guess, more of a statement, is that it is possible that we could just amend your motion to only include the, this very strange distinctions, for instance, Caldwell, which has only eight FSSD lots, Falcon Creek, which only has nine FSSD lots, Jackson Lake, which has one FSSD lot, one lot is FSSD, everything else is Williamson County. Those seem a little absurd, seems reasonable for this body to open zone those very strange segregations. The next question, I guess, would be Dr. Looney?
Yes, sir.
And it's probably rhetorical, but how many students do you project that will be moving to Williamson County in the next calendar year, during the summer, for instance, that we don't know about yet?
1,149.
So 1,149 students will be moving, projected, to Williamson County that we have put into our budget to accommodate?
Yes, sir, that's correct, assuming the county commission approves it, yes, sir.
Last year, we had the same projection, I assume, of unknown students that would move to the county. Do you know what the discrepancy was between actual and projected?
Less than 30, is my understanding.
So 30 students? That was pretty good accurate.
Yes, sir.
Well, as far as that being said, I mean, I understand, worst-case scenario, 175 students, it's unlikely that that would happen, in my mind, that 175 FSSD students in these split neighborhoods would want to provide their own transportation to go to a school that is further away, and only for the contingency of one year, that that's, you know, they're not guaranteed to come back next year.
Well, if I could correct that, once you allow them in, they stay.
Okay. All right, so no matter what, they'd stay until they move into the high school, which would be normal anyway?
Yes.
And if I may, Dr. Looney, add, under our Board policy, when someone attends per the open zoning, they can attend, and their siblings who fit within that window of the particular school can, and can continue with them. Based on the motion Mr. McLaughlin made, we would apply the Board policy to them, based, you know, based on the existing language.
Well, to Mr. Welch's view and others, I am of the, of view that this actually doesn't concern this Williamson County School Board, the idea that FSSD parents, students wanting to attend Williamson County schools, it is, as Ms. Mills said, that it was their decision to buy their house where they bought it. And I know that I used to live in FSSD, and now I'm not currently living there, I live down... I live down in Spring Hill. But it is an unusual and on the face, a ridiculous circumstance that we all find ourselves in with a school district inside a larger school district that only serves up to the middle school. It's strange. It's a little unique and on face value, ridiculous. But the parents and the citizens of FSSD that are affected do have a course of redress within their own system called their elected officials. And if they so desire to make a change, I suggest that it not be piecemeal, not by redrawing lines and not by open zoning each other, but by taking a longer view of correcting this by the absorption of Williamson, of the FSSD into Williamson County School District. That seems to be the only common sense approach. And given enough time in years, it seems like it would be an approach that could cause, cause or affect the resolution that we all are desiring or that the parents are desiring who have approached this board and petitioned this board for relief. That being said, I suggest that we move this decision back to the parents who are affected to work within their means to resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Thank you. I think we've had some really great conversation here tonight. And, you know, and although we have some different conclusions, I appreciate that I think everyone is looking at what is in the best interests of our students and the students of the county as a whole, certainly. So I do want to go ahead and call the question. I did want to make two quick points though. One, PJ, your point about the money following the students on the county level is accurate. You've got to remember that there's federal and state dollars and those are not the same. So for every student that you move from FSSD to Williamson County schools, you're taking several thousands of dollars out of the education system in the county as a whole. So that's where the difference, and that's where that $5,300 is coming from there. So that is a very realistic and accurate number. The other point I wanted to make is, I believe, Ken, it was you, and if I'm misappropriating this, and I apologize, talking about that these were Williamson County taxpayers already. That's true, but those Williamson County taxes they go to, go towards a Williamson County school, not necessarily the William County School District, but FSSD, which is a school district, Williamson County schools. And so their tax dollars are going towards it. Also, I want to point out that it's not like you're buying a ticket. What you're doing is you're doing a contribution to the whole. So whether or not you have a student or not, we all contribute towards a great school system, two great school systems here in the county. So I appreciate the discussion. I would like to call the question.
Thank you. Mr. Welch has called the question. Is there any objection to that? Is there, is there any objection to Mr. Welch calling the question? Are we ready to vote? Okay, I see none. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. McLaughlin, seconded by Mr. Peterson, to open zone Franklin Special School District students in the split theater subdivisions, not exceeding the number of students already approved for the 2014-15 open zoning, giving priority to Williamson County school students who apply to Williamson County school open zone schools. Is that correct, Mr. McLaughlin? Thank you. Are there any other questions before we vote? Dr. Looney?
My recommendation stands.
Thank you. A yes vote for point of clarification. A yes vote is that you support this motion. No vote is that you do not support this motion?
Yes, I'm over 17.
Okay. So we're, you put it up so we could revote? Okay. So everyone will need to revote?
I apologize.
Okay.
Your vote is three yes, eight no.
Motion fails. That concludes the business that is on this evening's agenda. I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. And if there are no other announcements, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.